You led by Mr. Bojack.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the board meeting June 10th, 2013. Just a reminder, if there is an emergency, please exit to the nearest exit, in this case, to the building, to the parking lot. Go to your vehicles, please do not leave until some director or emergency service personnel stays. This is also located, we've located before, a non-smoking facility. So if you must, please go outside. Forty minutes.
Yes, good evening everybody, just one approval for the board meeting minutes at eight twenty-eight, two thousand thirteen.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any change additions, deletion?
Just, um, I'm sorry I missed the last meeting, I was really looking forward to the report by the Senator. It was very well done.
Thank you.
Hopefully it will be implemented and get the success out of there as we expect. But, um, in the, in the report, you know, it keeps referring to live in the lobby, is alive in the lobby?
Oh, that's right.
I'm sure, I'm surprised Chris didn't, uh...
I hope they're alive.
I will, uh...
That's actually, I mean, just have to change that.
Oh, in the miss, not in the law, oh, I think she meant in the report that they gave, okay.
Second. All in favor?
Okay, the treasures report for this evening, total bills for the period, two hundred eighty-one thousand, three ninety-one thirty-three. Top five, Wolf House movers, fifty-two thousand for the Carnegie Library, Towne at Brookhaven, twenty-five thousand for the dredging spoils, Sandpiper, six thousand nine thirty-nine-eight for a tax redemption, Bayor Holesmopper, four thousand two seventy-nine twenty, Dublin Deck, New Village, will be reimbursed by the vendor, and Hilljust Givmore, three thousand six thirty-one for ditch club flood insurance, for a total of ninety-one thousand, A forty-one eighteen, if you can have a motion to approve.
Just on the, uh, on the Carnegie Library, the fifty-two thousand, that is broken debt up into three separate payments. One payment that went for their prep being done now at their facility, there'll be another portion of it paid after the first day, and another portion of the final portion paid after its move is secured on-site. So you can pay after fifty-two before it happens, it'll happen as it goes through, and this is also, let me reduce from the two hundred fifty thousand that's coming from Brooklyn. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any other questions, additions, deletions, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Anybody here for Patchogue Pride? Oh, you are, okay, are you here for...
Please.
Police. Great.
It's over, Ned. It's over.
Oh, it's my neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, so, of course. What's that? Vicki's what?
Yeah, sure.
And where is your hubby?
He couldn't come.
Uh...
Sorry.
This is a beautiful house, by the way.
Thank you, very nice.
Um, I think, it was an empty lot at one time, wasn't it?
It was a small summer shack.
Yeah, yeah, which, in our neighborhood, there's a lot of those, there's some still there, too, it used to be a summer shack, uh, residential neighborhood, but, uh, this is on Third Street?
Fourth.
Fourth Street, right, Fourth Street.
Struck you on...
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. And, uh, this house is beautiful, it's really an improvement in the neighborhood, and, uh, what we have here is our Patchogue Pride Award, uh, and your name, first name?
Suzanne.
Suzanne, and this is, uh, Rich, Richard Felice, Jr., lifelong Patchogger, and, uh, in fact, it's right behind his father's house, which is typical of my neighborhood.
That's all the catch.
Yeah, it's a beautiful, uh, everybody take a look at it, they've done a really nice job on this house, a very big improvement to the neighborhood, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, but thank you for the time to do this.
I think you're long, it's beautiful.
He talks to it every day.
Yeah. That's a great job, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank Walter, and thank you very much. River Avenue, that place just...
If you put down River Avenue, there's been a house that's been, uh, redone, refurbished, rebuilt, and for those that don't know Benny Gucci, he's the one that did it, really did it, came out beautiful. Yeah? It's, uh, it's about halfway down a block three, house is south of the school on the west side. It's really... Yeah.
Thank you for it.
Oh.
Know that this place was here for it.
Yeah. And lived in the motel.
Yes.
You don't forget it. You have time on, Mr. Smith?
Special right.
Come on, watch, love, we do a report.
Got, got it, I think. Mr. Vaya, trustees, Cecile, Lieutenant Egan, ladies and gentlemen, Dennis Smith with the Business Improvement District Annual Report, my eighth, I believe. I think everybody has a copy, if you want to follow along. The BID was able to move ahead yet again in 2012, 2013 despite working with reduced budget of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. All regular services were maintained and a few new initiatives were started. The working budget for 2013-14 will be a hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred. 2012, 2013 saw successful completion of our second New York Main Street grant. This grant was for five hundred thousand dollars and saw a total of nine hundred and thirty thousand in improvements to nineteen buildings, three apartments, and several street state projects. When you add a two thousand and eight grant for two hundred thousand and combine it with the last grant, the 2010 five hundred thousand dollar grant, we have realized just under two million dollars in total improvements to the downtown business district, and a lot of them were very noticeable. The good news is, we're not done yet. The BID was awarded a third Main Street grant in 2012 for another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, thank you to Marion Russo from the Village CDA office for lending her expertise and her hard work in helping to secure this grant. This grant encompasses South, heads out Ocean Avenue, the building on the corner, and then it goes across South, South Ocean on the south side of East Main Street, from South Ocean down to 112, and then across to the north side of East Main Street from 112 to Maple Avenue. Pretty, encompasses a pretty large area, but there's a lot that we can do there. To date, we have issued ten applications, five have been returned, for the improvements that are going to be considered at a meeting of the Grants Approval Committee later this month, and I'm sure many additional positive projects are anticipated in addition to the five we're going to be working on now with this grant. With an eye toward trying to work projects that might help with parking throughout the village, the Bid This Cash Year initiated a wayfinding sign study, I've talked about it many times here. This program would number all of the downtown business district parking lots, identify them off with white and blue signage, and also have blue and white signs installed on major streets and roadways, pointing the way to the numbered lots. This would be a way to maximize parking choices, particularly with people that would be new to the village and not familiar with our parking lots, and the study concluded that that was an issue, that not everybody knew where the best place to park would be. After approval from this board, the village board for this project, the BID presented to the Community Development Agency Board as an adven for funding. We, the BID, thanked the CDA board for agreeing to fund this project up to twenty-five thousand dollars. The signs are in the process of being installed right now, they look great, and will hopefully accomplish what we had planned, and that is to better facilitate parking lot for the village. This cash year, we also attended our second HIA Long Island Business to Business Trade Show, that was this past May twenty-third, in the Suffolk County campus in Brunswick. Again, we made many great contacts that were still working, and we were joined this year by the chamber, theater, CDA office, and elected village officials at the show, and of course, the purpose there was the marketing and promotion of the Patchogue Village to business professionals attending that show, and again, many good contacts we made, and, uh, we've, we've got some, some work to do with that. In the upcoming year, it is our hope to attend the Javits, Javits Center Retail Trade Show, which is held every January, it's the biggest retail trade show, uh, I shouldn't say, I think it's the second video, it's Las Vegas, I was told, is bigger, but it's a big show, a really big show, and, uh, we get the people that can make a difference there, I mean, you talk to people that would look at the demographics that you have, and perhaps, uh, you know, make a decision about putting a new retail establishment within your village. But at any rate, we want to go to the show in January 2014 with our sights on purchasing a booth and participating in the show to market the village there in January of 2015. Want to check it out first, see what we need to do, do a lot of more, come back, and hopefully be able to set up shop at the show in January of 2015. The 2012-13 year was the last year of our five-year commitment to help the dredging of the Patchogue River, which in kind freed up thirty thousand dollars, which was a help in approaching the gaps that would have occurred in this lean budget year. We continually improved and upgraded the BID website, keeping Crystal, Eunice, I'll look, she's here tonight, Bond is a consultant, and our hands-on tech rep for this purpose, and we thank her for the diligent effort that she's, she's expended in improving our site. We continually extended the vegetation control parameters each year. Last year, we added Route 112, all the way up to Lakewood. This year, we added more of West Main Street from West Avenue to Waverly Avenue. Service has proven to be extremely worthwhile over the past five years, weeding on the curb sites and in the pavers was a big, big problem five years ago, something that Valentine and the village couldn't keep up with, and I'm happy to say when we do this program, we haven't had that problem in the past five years, and it encompasses a large segment of the village at this point. The board directors on a suggestion from President Pete Rowe has added new quadrant committees. This basically divides the village into four squares or quadrants, starting at the four corners. The quadrants are broken down as southwest, which includes the river, northwest, southeast, and northeast. Each quadrant has three to four board members assigned with a committee chair for each one. The significance of each quadrant is to have a BID board member who owns a building or business in his or her quadrant to canvass their area and determine the needs and issues in each section, and report back to the BID board at our regular monthly meeting. This way, the bid board could consider specific situations in each quadrant and try to figure a way for the bid to be helpful and better serve those areas. In addition to the major events and happenings that I just spoke about, uh, within this past year, we're still in the business of day-to-day services. Valentine still does a great job in maintaining some of the solid streets in our parking lots, we've actually added them on Saturday mornings for the summer, to, to help out there, we're a little weak on, on that particular morning. Along with street maintenance, we still purchase and maintain the flowering hanging basket program, the garden plantings, and the maintenance in the village parking lots and the railroad station. We provide the tree and plant watering maintenance, we provide the holiday declarations and lighting and their maintenance and storage, we also provide financial support of the Patchogue Chamber of Commerce, theater venues, and the Department of Recreation and some of the various events that they have, as well as lending financial support to the Patchogue Arts Council. As always, the bid board of directors works hard all year donating their time and talent for the benefit and well-being of Patchogue Village, and are be, are to be commended for their untiring efforts. Personally, and on behalf of the BID board of directors, I want to thank Mayor Ponte Eric, and this entire board for your continued support and assistance as we take on and accomplish the endeavors with which we become involved. Also, the BID would like to thank the Village DPDW, Department of Recreation, Chamber of Commerce, Garden Club, and all the other groups throughout the village that we have a great mutual support system with. In closing, we've just finished another very exciting year, and a very successful year in Patchogue Village, and it amazes me how every year just brings an abundance of forward-thinking ideas and fresh new projects from all corners of the village. One idea seems to play off another, one study gets another study, which, something comes from, from this office, something comes from the chamber, but it, it, it's like in a, it's an endless cycle, but it's a good one. One, one idea plays off the other, and the last great idea, and so on, it's never boring, and it's always good. With that being said, I'm concluding, the Business Improvement District looks forward to yet another positive and fulfilling year ahead. And unless, is there any questions for me?
Thank you, Dan, you guys do a wonderful job, you really do, thank you, very much appreciated, and you can see it, you can see it, you can feel it, you know, um, all the organizations feel of each other, but, you know, the bid is, becomes such a critical piece of, you know, of what happened, and really much appreciated. You have additional of these that you could give to Linda, Dionne, like...
I have, I have actually...
If you could give to them, it's a full... They seem like... They can't prepare. Michael, pack it away, so we can have to read it. And Dionne, wake up back there. Okay. Dionne, when they should be in the back, break and barrel them, I don't know.
The signs look great.
Yeah. Thank you.
The signs look bad.
I think they're coming out nicely. Uh, we've kind of sold it back a little because, you know, we want, it's a conflict with the, the recitals from the ballet, and we can get in there to do it, but it's going to get done, uh, hopefully it's going to get, going to get started again this week, and one more day should do it. And then we just want to revisit some of the others because we're looking, and we may need to make them a little, a little bigger, but we're, we're on, we're talking about that already, but thank you. Hey, thank you.
Congratulations, Dan. Nice job.
Thank you, thank you.
You got our grant?
I got the grant, yeah.
Okay, we have the first of four hearings tonight, notice is hereby given that a public hearing be held on Monday, June 10th, six P M., fourteen Baker Street, Patchogue, New York, by the Village Board, the Incorporated Village of Patchogue, to amend section four thirty-five dash forty of Village Code to create a good neighbor fence policy, by proposal of the law, copy which is on file at the Office of the Village Clerk, at said public hearing, any person interested would be given the opportunity to be heard.
Basically, the issue came up, was the what side of the fence do you get when somebody puts a fence up? And, uh, on your stocking, there is a inside and outside, a good side, a bad side, and the neighbors should never get the bad side unless the neighbor requests, there's got to be an agreement.
Yes, I mean, they could, it's not written here, but, uh, the other important factor of this, uh, on the enactment was that, um, it's to promote a good neighbor policy, so if the neighbors do want to do something like that, they could certainly do it, the village will, uh, you know, enforce it negatively against the property owner, but also, more importantly, included in is a specific exemption for offenses that were erected prior to the state, so the village in a number, is not going to require homeowners to go out and have the expenses switching all their fences around. So upon sufficient proofs of it, the village department, they'll exempt any previous fences.
I have a question. Paul brought up a good point. You put up your fence with the neighbor who lives there, and they say, "Oh, yeah, I don't care, you can put the bad side on my side," and then the new guy moves in, you know, that the change, and the new guy says, "Wait a minute."
No, but I would definitely get that writing...
Okay.
From the neighbor, and that's going to be, that's certainly going to be an issue. I mean, if you don't have it in writing, the village will enforce that, it'd be no good neighbor fence policy if they erect a fence and it's the wrong side out, the village is going to be erecting it, I mean, enforcing it, the village is surely going to be proactive on complaints. Trusty Ferbs already spoke with the billing department about ready to get the billing department to, upon neighbor complaints on new fences that are being erected, to issue tickets and proceed with the notice of violation and a warning first, to get people tuned into this.
How do we get that out to the general public that this is a, a requirement now?
Media. Rely on the media. By the way, a, a second issue here is safety. It's really hard to climb the front side, the friendly side, of a stocking fence, very easy to climb the other side, it actually has...
Right.
And especially for pool safety, it's really a pretty important thing.
Question, Paul. Motion to a session presented. Motion. Second. Second. Okay.
Okay, notice is hereby given that a public hearing be held on Monday, June 10th, six P M., fourteen Baker Street, by the Board, Village Board, the Incorporated Village of Patchogue, to amend sections four thirty-five dash sixty-five B, four thirty-five dash eighty-two A three B, four thirty-five A three D of Village Code to increase the minimum notice for public hearing before the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals, by proposal of the law, copy which is on file at the Office of the Village Clerk, at said public hearing, any person interested would be given the opportunity to be heard.
Mr. Egan?
This is simply moving the, uh, this is, this was originally added to the, to the code book in nineteen sixty-four, uh, it was amended in nineteen seventy-two. The presumption is that why they made those changes, one of the changes were happening internal to Patchogue, now obviously we have people outside of the village developing the village, and the issue is the service of the notice, and it's not delivery, it's service, so that's the, that's the definitive objective proof that gets filed with the billing department as a jurisdictional question for their hearing, so the postmarks must be before that time. So we, uh, the suggestion was made that some of these things were short, certainly we looked into it, there, it could be a concern with delays from the post office, if you mail from the post office saying miniola or haw-haw, so what the proposal was to move it from five days to ten days.
So if I am a hearing coming out on the eleventh of June, what date do I put it out to be in the mail?
First, ten days before.
It has to be in the mail by the...
Correct.
Postmark the first.
Correct.
So basically, it's going to be ten days to get the...
Correct.
Ten business days or ten...
Ten days.
Ten, ten calendar days.
Yes.
Yeah, I would just think you're in guilt. Some of these attorneys, they'll send it out on Friday, knowing they're going to lose two days, so by the time you get here, it's five days swing.
Correct.
Any other comments, questions, but, or... Motion to a session presented. All in favor? Aye.
Okay, notice is hereby given that a public hearing be held on Monday, June 10th, fourteen Baker Street, Patchogue, New York, by the Village Board, the Incorporated Village of Patchogue, to amend section four thirty-five B of Village Code to modify the penalties for failure to obtain a building permit, by proposal of the law, copy which is on file at the Office of the Village Clerk, at said public hearing, any person interested would be given the opportunity to be heard. Uh, you know what?
We skipped one, but we do this.
Very sorry.
As the village, I'm sorry, as the village clerk read the, the section, this is to modify the, the building permit penalties, uh, the concern from the billing department was that it set a minimum that could be extremely punitive in that it set, the, the prior penalty was a civil penalty, it was not less than double the value of the permit or a thousand dollars, whichever is greater. In the chief billing inspector's opinion, he felt that some small infractions of building without a building permit, such as decks, which required a small fee, a hundred dollar fee or a two hundred dollar fee, were then subjecting the property owners to thousand dollar fines.
It was a thousand plus the building fee.
Correct.
So now you're a thousand, you're twelve fifty.
Right. Right. So the chief billing inspector's recommendation was that they double the value of the permit.
And many of these things happen.
Not really.
Build decks, you know, you buy a bunch on a morning weekend, you get your money in a case of beer, and you build a deck, and all of a sudden, you want to go sell your house, and we're trying to hit you for twelve hundred fifty dollars for something that you never realized in the first place, it's punitive, you know, it's punitive damages, and that's part of the... Comments by the board? The public? Motion? Second. Second. All in favor? Aye.
Sorry, we don't have water, notice is hereby given that a public hearing be held on Monday, June 10th, six P M., fourteen Baker Street, by the Village Board, the Incorporated Village of Patchogue, to amend section three ninety dash six A of Village Code to require persons providing taxi cab services to maintain adequate parking facilities for drivers, by proposal of the law, copy which is on file at the Office of the Village Clerk, at said public hearing, any person interested would be given the opportunity to be heard.
Cause complaints about cab drivers, but I'll, but I'll leave it to them, you can imagine what the complaints are, and this is just, if you're going to have a cab company and you're going to have an office in the village, the parking facilities have to be, you have to have an office, they have to be twenty-four hours, and you have to have a place for your cab drivers to meet, greet, and do other things.
How many cab companies operates within the village that have offices in the village?
All, all, all of them are licensed or required to do so, and I think that one of the concepts of, along with that, that in discussion, the board will recall, we did enacted a few meetings ago, some revisions to the taxi cab section, there was a comment that was made by, by a member of the public complaining about taxi drivers using parking lots as restroom facilities, and now certainly as a while railroad station being closed, it became a more acute concern. In our review of the law, it made sense that if you were required to have a dispatching station in Patchogue, which is another reason why, too, is that they had somewhere to go, literally, far from fun, but that's what this...
They would have to be open twenty-four hours.
While they're on duty, they have, they have limited hours, or, if they have a driver on the road, the building has to be open for that.
Comments, publics? Motion? Second. Second. Okay, request approval to pay the person's installment, payment of sixty thousand eight ninety-five, S J Horni Construction, they are doing the cement work and the foundation work at, on the library. Motion? Second. Second. All in favor? Aye. Okay. I received a letter from Suffolk County P D, and it, the letter was pretty much about code enforcement and the job that we're doing, um, but one of, but the premise of the letter also is, while officers are deployed to conduct traffic enforcement on a consistent basis for the, in the village, once it is enforced, it's complaint-based, or traffic complaint is received, the standard level enforcement is, is enhanced with appropriately tailored supplemental enforcement measures. As, as a result, it would be greatly appreciated if you could forward the complaints, the traffic quality of life issues to Inspector Moheer, so they can be appropriately tracked and addressed. Additionally, as we discussed, in response to, to your request, the effectiveness of our enforcement could be enhanced with procurement of laser speed enforcement devices by the village. Basically, radar, the following information is provided, response, your inquiries surrounding the type of laser used by officers. One of the issues they have is they have a limited number within, within the precinct itself. Remember years ago, back in the eighties, we actually bought Suffolk P D a car, I don't remember that really good, that, we'd actually bought, bought them a vehicle, what they're saying is that this, this laser, that will be assigned to the car, which is assigned, it would be assigned to, to village cars, and, you know, were you, they commented about, what's the Ciro?
Ciro, in the south.
South Ocean Avenue, and this piece of equipment, obviously, it'll be timed to find it outside the village, but it will be primarily assigned to the village, purchased by the village, so used within the village.
Is there any training?
Uh, the Suffolk P D guys use it.
So we don't have to pay a training?
No, no, just get the piece of equipment, give me the opportunity to use it here in the village.
They have, you understand that it has to be used exclusively within the village?
Yeah, yep.
Pays for, I assume these things have to get calibrated?
Yes, that, that will be, that will be, oh, we're going to have a piece of equipment, say it should be used within a village, you know, make it somebody with it, so we can pay it off.
Should we not, not make sure that you don't own it, though?
We, 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 we do own it.
Should we not own it for my building?
You know, I, I don't think the cost of it, we're going to donate it to Suffolk County least apartment with the explicit instruction that it has to be used only within the village.
Yeah, okay.
And the revenue comes back to the village?
Right.
Or at least part.
Is normal taxing, yeah, they're normal.
They can get ten tickets, a quarter a piece, we pay for it, so...
A motion to purchase a piece of equipment.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Can I get one on my clock?
Okay, um, chamber. Trustees.
Attorney mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Panieri. First off, I'd like to, to fill in for trustee Keys, who is, um, well, or.
Yeah.
He's feeling a little wet today. So, I'm just going to request approval for the property owner of three fifty East Main Street to contact H two M for conceptual approval for an out of district sewer connection with referral to the village by H two M.
Actually, this is the first, it's out of village, out of district. This is the shopping center and is part of the East Patrick Sewer improvement district. The, it's where the bagel shop is and that shopping center to hook into the sewer system. And that's part of the, when he's made to put the line in and put the pump station. So, motion to. Uh, three fifty East Main Street, contact H two M for referral.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Uh, my first point is theater report. My only theater report is to apologize to Mark that I didn't get your message till very late in the day.
Well, they, I got there at eight. At ten o'clock, it was jammed.
Yeah.
My one girl, her car was parked with security, it got stolen.
No, no.
No, figured that.
Oh, you do? Oh, that's what I was told.
That's all been, that's all.
Oh, okay.
She parked in the wrong lot.
All right, all right, well, she's a little.
I told her not to park there.
Striped out from the record.
I told her.
She didn't buy her a new coyote.
What?
Maybe she didn't buy her a new coyote.
I know.
Oh, no. I apologize.
All right.
I didn't have my phone with me. Most of the day. Smart.
Yeah.
It's liberating to forget your phone, especially when you forget it for the whole day. I'd like to request approval to hold a block party on West Lakewood Street on Saturday, July thirteenth, from ten A M. to eight P M. We waive the alcohol restriction.
Motion?
It's a motion.
Second.
Somebody?
Second.
Just a little favor?
Aye.
Okay.
That's all I have, just there. Oh, oh, that's right, one more. Oh, I'm happy to do this. Yeah. Uh, request approval to promote Officer James Frezett to senior code enforcement officer. I have a letter here from Jim Burbidge, who has a glowing report of Officer Frezett. And I can say for a fact that I've been in the field with him and a very good officer and a very, um, good guy and a good officer, very vigilant here in the village, does a good job. So, I'm going to make a motion to promote Officer Frezett to senior code enforcement officer. It's a motion?
Second.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Frezett.
Trustee, please.
Uh, just two items I'd like to bring to the board's attention. First is, um, there's a request from Emily Gaddy to attend a K B S summer training school and conference. It's for July twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth for her and Kathleen Gallo to get software training. And that would be for an amount not to exceed three thousand dollars. That would include airfare and hotel accommodations, so.
Really, no?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Sure, we're not expected to drive there.
Yep.
Right.
It's better to go there.
So, it's in the form of a motion.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And then, just, I didn't know who we should contact, whether it's Johnson Controls or not, about possibly getting, a left-hand green arrow for eastbound travelers on Main Street and North Ocean Avenue. I found myself stuck there for three light changes before I could turn left. And it, um, I think it would just be good to coordinate a southbound green arrow with a northbound green arrow. Try and alleviate some of the congestion on Main Street and get traffic flowing and just, um, you know.
It's back enough.
It does back up.
All the way.
So, it just might, it might help it a little bit and we could, and I don't know who to cut. I think Johnson does our traffic.
Let's get, get hold of Johnson, try to get estimate price, course on it.
It might, uh, might just free up some of the traffic flow.
Okay.
And we can take a, just create a bar next to it, so. And that's all I have, it seems.
Thank you, sir. Trustee, program.
Mister Mayor, fellow trustees, just a quick update in the Carnegie Library from Pete Sarich. Uh, construction of the foundations progressing well. The footings were poured last week. The concrete tests have come back from the lab with the desired strength. Uh, contractor has swum up the walls and should pour, uh, walls on tomorrow, weather permitting. Uh, the walls need to sit there for three weeks before we can put the building on top of it, so it's progressing well, but that's all I have. Just want to add something. I meant to mention this to you in the glowing report. As far as the billing department goes, and I think that this probably is a billing department issue, but I believe we have a tenant in our storage facility.
What storage facility?
Right, on Lively Avenue, across from you, Mark.
What?
Storage facility across from you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, I've noticed a couple going in there a few nights, probably three or four nights last week, late at night, because I walk my dog back there.
Where are we talking about?
Way of the avenue.
Big store.
Behind Seven Eleven.
Behind Seven Eleven.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I believe that they're going in there.
No, they promised not to do it. They were here later this year.
That's the condition of the special time.
Right. Yeah.
Maybe Pete can check it out or.
And do they tell people on duty all twenty-four hours?
No.
But they have hours.
But if they have a tenant that's willful, they know what they're doing, they're letting them in, they have egress and egress and.
Well, if you book one of those units, you can get in.
Not twenty-four hour.
No, you go in before ten o'clock.
Yeah.
And you can leave at six A M. or whatever it is.
Okay.
Are they going to the building or are they going into the back parking lot?
They're going into the back parking lot.
So, they probably have access to the gate and they have something.
Either they're sleeping in the car or somewhere.
Well, once you get in through, because I used to use that place, once you get in through the gate, you get into the building. Yeah, pretty sure. I used to be.
Do not cause any trouble.
In that building by myself.
It's not habitable space.
It's not habitable.
The party is one of the places we can find. So, I'll, I'll ask.
Do you see your father's pet?
Right, that was a condition of their permit, right?
Correct, that's a permit, yep.
That's what you get.
Quite often.
I look like you. I'm sorry. Kind of oil, okay. Please, David.
I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving me the butter. Uh, just, uh, I've got a great little story. You know, as you know, in my, my day job, I'm out and about. I was in a small little restaurant in Huntington. And I noticed behind the bar they had some Keegan's Mother's Milk. So, if you don't know what that is, it's a beer made by Tom Keegan's son in upstate New York. So, I started talking to the girl who worked there and the subject of Patchogue came up. She said, "Oh, my God, you live in Patchogue?" Now, mind you, I was in Huntington. She said, "I love it there. I wish I lived closer." You know, that was, she said she loves barbecue, the brick house, all her friends come to Patchogue, so I never thought I'd hear that sitting in Huntington.
That was a restaurant. Uh, Westbury called Gilio's, Eleventh, Eighteenth Allison. Great, if you like Italian, so good. But more time to say the same, Jim.
Yeah.
And barbecue and the brick house.
Oh, how funny is that?
And a guy lives in, I don't know, the, someplace along the ocean, I mean, he was a master pilot.
That's great. Love to hear that. So, okay. Um, so I just wanted to give a couple of dates of things that are going on at Patchogue Arts Council. I have mentioned in the last meeting that they have a new gallery established at Rose, which is for Patchogue Arts Council members. And there'll be every sixty days a new show. It'd be like a one-person show that will be selected. So, right now, we have some lovely artwork up and the reception, this is the second reception for this artist, because the first one wasn't properly publicized. Will be June twenty-third at two P M. So, I hope you'd like to come down and meet the artist and see the work. It's, it's very nice.
And he will send me an email and remind me?
And I will send you an email and remind you. And then, on June twentieth at six thirty P M., we have a reception at the Lobby Gallery, which is another gallery that the Patchogue Arts Council curates. And this will be the photography of Crystal K. Nicola, who's right here in the audience. Uh, June twentieth, I believe, that's a, it's a, I don't know. And then, there will be a third location that Patchogue Arts Council will be curating as a gallery. And this will be in the Teachers Federal Credit Union as soon as they open.
Oh, really?
So, yes. So, John Cino, who's basically the committee that talks, that is very busy running around selecting art. You want to help, he just helps.
Does he?
Yeah, you should help. So, anyway, we're, we're spreading artwork all throughout Patchogue and, you know, just encourage everybody to come to the two receptions. And other than that, I only have one other thing, which is, everybody has the letter here requesting approval to have live amplified music at Fireman's Park for Jerry, game of seven, on Friday, July twenty-sixth and Saturday, July twenty-seventh. This is the first time that they are requesting to do this on two days. And they're requesting the music go till eleven P M. Then times are six to eleven on Friday and noon to eleven on Saturday.
Mister Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm very much opposed to, uh, request to have this event. It's the weekend after the music festival. We have never allowed back, back music events at Shorefront Park. The applicant has total disregard for what the village parks department has planned for that weekend, which is on Friday night, which is printed in the, the, uh, new bulletin. Friday night is the kids' dance party at the band show featuring Alurgi Music, it's Alma Light and from seven to nine. Saturday night, band show, village parks department, has Howie Seale and friends from seven to nine. And I'm, I'm very upset that this is, that this has come to this point. Most of all, because, as usual, the applicant's applied so late that we pretty much, it'd be very difficult for us to ask him to change his dates or to change his music or to change the beer wagon. And, uh, also, the applicant's not here tonight for to answer our questions, for instance, he's, he's not selling a beer. Beer is coming with a price of admission. So, does that mean that we don't allow anybody under eighteen in because the price of admission includes beer?
I believe in the past that it embraces people who are of age and are paying for the option to drink.
But my point is, there's several questions, especially for a two-day festival, who wants to extend the time. And the applicant's not here, so. I make, well, I can't, can I make a motion?
Did you make a motion?
I think my motion was to.
Oh, okay. I advise us to limit it to one night and to limit it till ten thirty. That's what I'd like to see.
Okay, the board? Can, can the event be changed? I mean, can the date be changed?
I honestly was not moved until I got this. He's been doing it every year, one night.
Yeah.
Obviously, it would have made more sense, and I'll make this recommendation for the future, to approach us first before going to the bands, the fire department, and the liquor authority, which that's all in place already.
So, both of these events would overlap village events?
Yeah, both nights.
I mean, that's.
And there's no parking. Where's anybody going to park?
I mean, if.
Howie draws a huge crowd. It's one of our biggest draws.
Maybe if you have one event going on at the band show and one event going on at the park with music, you know, I've, I've seen that before. I recall something recently or last year that I went to, there was something going on in, in two places and it was.
Like the hat, right?
I don't know which day it was, but, um.
Parking, parking is going to be, I mean, they do have parking underway and they do, you know, people obviously park down on Bay and San Pries and Smith Street to get there. But it, um, I'm agreeing with you, though. I think we should limit it to one night and maybe not allow it to go so late. You know, they have it just on the one day, um, you know, I know it's a very popular event and it has a lot of acts lined up to perform, but, um, you know, to maybe restrict him, uh, would be a clear sign to him that, okay, this is something that should be coordinated a little bit more, uh, with our office. And, um, you know, he'll get the message quite clearly that next year, if he's going to be doing this, that he should come and make sure that it, uh, it fits in with our calendar as well with all the other events that we have, so, um, you know, in order to get permission to the park, you need to provide insurance, the fire department, all those things. So, I'm not too concerned about if there's an event or a, uh, an accident or whatnot. But I would be in favor of limiting it to Saturday, um, and eleven o'clock is kind of late, you know, for that.
Saturday would be Friday, Jim.
What's that?
Saturday would be Friday. The Saturday keeps directly with Howie, which is.
Yeah.
Well, Friday is a kids' event, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Friday is five hours, six to eleven, whereas Saturday was typically the day that we did it in the past, which would have the majority of the acts.
Saturday starts at twelve o'clock.
So, yeah, yeah.
You know, the fire department usually sells hamburgers and things and keeps all the Friday.
But my concern is that there's something going on at the band show. And you've got an event that draws a lot of people at the band show. And then, you're going to have this event which is going to draw a lot of people and just a competing music.
Well, the album last year was, when he did was Six Gun.
That's what it was, yeah, yes, yes.
And enforced.
Yeah, yes, exactly. That's the one of them.
And it was, it was just like this.
Yeah.
And also, the, I think that's what I did, yeah.
Can he move the date?
Um, I really don't know.
What about if they had no music during the two hours of the band show concert and just do?
It's more of a parking thing as well. I think that we should go with the Friday night because it's going to, it's going to conflict less with the children's thing. Because he's, you know, he's more of a on, a dance. It's a great show.
Yeah.
Everybody should go to that Friday night. I think he doesn't agree with it.
It's a good show at the, uh.
Alma Light.
At the Family Day.
Yeah.
I think we limit it to Friday night for those few hours. It's, uh, it's going to be very difficult for him to hold the event. Um, I fully understand, understand the conflict that we're wrestling with. But, um, to have it just on the one night, uh, from six to ten thirty, it, um.
Well, what about Friday night and Saturday noon to six P M.?
Seven or something like that.
Whenever before the other concert. Enough time for people to depart.
What time is the show going on?
Seven, I think, seven. You know, so they do noon to six on Saturday.
I think we do.
Because I know a lot of families, I mean, look, I spent the whole day there. I stopped down, spent a few hours. There's usually families with kids and they picky and, yeah, so Friday, that's a really.
Billy, that's a real clear message.
What is that?
Well, it's in conflict with the, with the pre-established village event that's happening Saturday evening.
Well, so six.
Six, Saturday.
To get time for the cost.
Yeah, clear out, come in.
So, Friday and Saturday until six. He's just going to have to talk to some of the acts, I guess.
No, we, we don't care about, I mean, this is a fundraiser, right? I mean, I know it's not.
Well, he doesn't run it as a fundraiser, from what I understand.
Because they have liquor at it.
Well, in the past, they have had excess money over their costs, and so they've given that access to the fire department. And last year, it was actually not given to the fire department, it was given to the high school, to the Michael Riley Memorial Scholarship. So, they don't make any money on the event. And all the money is donated to one cause or another. It's community-based. The liquor authority doesn't allow you to have a temporary permit for a fundraiser.
So, it's, it's none of my business.
I, I don't know. That's what's in here. I'm not an expert on liquor law.
Once again, if the applicant was here, we would be able to.
Right.
We would be able to answer our questions. And in the past, I know this for a fact, we have postponed, making a decision on this until the applicant has come.
I don't know. Well, I just got this, like.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
I mean, I would, my, I, Billy said, if John was here to, because we're saying, well, let's do it this and let's do that. He might say, well, forget it. I can't do it those, you know, those hours are not, are not good for the event. Can I find a different date? can I find a different date when there's not any competition with, uh, the, what's going on?
Yeah, that's, I would consider giving him permission to do it. If he declines the offer, then he has to just come back.
That's what we.
Right. Look at these five dates and the time, then.
What are we normal, like, for the, for the, uh, South Bay Festival, what's the, um, curfew for music?
Highs and low.
Eleven.
Yeah.
Right, exactly, Sunday, nine on Sunday.
Nine on Sundays.
Okay, um, do you have a motion on the board?
Okay, so the motion, based on our discussion, would be to modify this application for the event times of Friday, six to eleven, and Saturday, noon to six?
Four eleven to six, everyone.
Four eleven to six, okay. And to advise the applicant in the future to come to us first with the dates as part of the process.
I think that's a good compromise.
Billy, maybe we can hold it, uh, five o'clock, two and a half.
Well, I had, I had a discussion with commissioners, and I've asked them that they do not grant any dates for events such as this without the applicant showing a permission from the board.
Right.
And, uh, second of all, uh, I feel that if we should, uh, the board should give a time period, a minimum amount of time period that people have to come for us.
We know of this, the notice period.
Right.
If they wanna have, what, amplified music or special?
Right.
I mean, I could have a daughter's graduation party down there, we can have amplified music, or just wait.
That's different.
It's different, right.
Right, with alcohol, alcohol and amplified music, that minimum three months. So that they are able to change the date, if they have minimum commitments. And I don't wanna rain on this parade, but, you know. And the, the other thing is that, are we charging a permit to music? No.
It's not, it's, uh, so, uh, probably.
Well, he's paying for the fire department, their fees, they have a fee.
Yeah.
I paid two hundred and fifty dollars behind myself.
Okay, the motion that's on the board is?
I'll second the words on it, which is six o'clock on Friday.
Six to eleven.
To eleven. And then eleven o'clock to six o'clock on Saturday. I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, pose.
So we have.
Okay.
Billy, um, we should make a resolution requiring three months advance notice.
Sure, you do that, there's a.
We're doing that right now.
I mean, it's a separate issue, it applies to anybody who wants to have, um.
Amplified music.
Amplified music or.
And/or alcohol.
Commercial, commercial events where they're charging, that's really the way you, you can define it.
Well, is this, uh, are they charging the commissioners?
Yeah.
Yeah, people who participate pay either one fee to hear the music, or if they want to add the beer option, they can.
Yeah, special events, amplified music, or waiver of the, uh, liquor authority.
Brian, technically, they should have a noise permit, right? A lot of, a music permit.
Well, they're asking for the waiver for this one event.
Okay.
So normally, the answer is yes, and that's why they made the special request.
That could we do something with the fire department and say, you know, if it's got a conflict with a village event down there that.
Yeah. Well, I spoke to them.
Those, those are, no, those days.
I mean, three months advance notice.
We know that.
I'm still very concerned that it's back to back to the music festival, that's why I go to the guest. We should have the other, this is, it's bad, especially, that's gonna come down on me and the, and the Parks Department, the girls. You know, people would come, you know, and I don't blame them. It's loud down there, so, and still, that, that hasn't been solved.
Yeah.
And so, like I said, short notice, oh, create tremendous hardship, you know, I don't.
He knows exactly what's going on, what's happening right now. Okay, it's large, anything else? Nothing on trees.
Nothing on trees, I'm waiting till the fall for trees. I only lost two trees on this main street with that serious drought last year. Once I put by Burlington, and actually, if you want me to talk about trees.
No, I don't.
The three L A elements, the biggest ones are doing fantastic.
That's, uh, yeah, I'm really good about that.
So I was very happy that we only lost two, and I have to have Joe cut them down, and we will plant in the fall any additional trees.
Yeah, okay.
The spring just went by.
Cool.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody who participated in the playground, though, with the pirate ship.
That's right.
Oh, that was great.
It was a fantastic day, and, uh.
Make sure Marina knows that she did a wonderful job.
She did, everybody did a great job, and, uh, I picked up the bagels from the morning, so.
You did a wonderful job.
I think I did a good job doing that, then I had to go to work, so, thank God. I'd like to request approval for P Y A annual, annual end-of-the-year picnic at Ryder Avenue Complex on Saturday, July twenty-seventh from four to seven. Is motion?
Does that have music?
Uh, music, very loud music.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Request approval, hire additional summer recreation staff. And I have to take back what I said at the last meeting. That's a motion.
Say it.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request approval for Patchogue Medford High School to hold the annual Homecoming Parade on Main Street on Saturday, October twenty-sixth from eleven noon.
Say it.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So carry.
You know, the, uh, I'm just seeing here, the chambers having, you know, that's their Halloween happening the same day.
Really?
Yeah, but it's ten to eleven, right?
Yeah, it's only an hour.
Well, the Halloween happening, they don't set up like.
Halloween happening, sure.
Yeah, they requested Main Street be closed.
The.
Main Street closed.
From Maple Avenue, West Avenue, from eleven to six.
It starts at ten o'clock. It works, they're gonna close Main Street anyway.
Main Street.
Yeah.
Okay.
But if they close it and they're setting up.
The police school.
Yeah, the parade is, God, well, someone should.
The vendors won't, are the vendors, Halloween? No, right, so.
Crystal, you think it's gonna be an issue?
I don't think so. If they do it as they've done in previous years, it's usually the kids go trick-or-treating from business to business, I would say. I'm not sure what they have planned for this year, though.
You have a war with those Main Street.
No, they're gonna have, uh, pumpkin decorating and other children's activities.
Oh.
The trick-or-treating you're talking about is maybe on Thursday.
Is it? So you're talking about the fall festival, then?
Oh.
It's called, it's called the Halloween Happens on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, from noon to five. We request that Main Street be closed from Maple Avenue to West Avenue from eleven to six. Setup will begin at eleven, and breakdown will be over by six P M. At noon, a parade of children, and costume will start at West Avenue and end at Waste, Maple Avenue.
So, again, Main Street's.
Crashing into each other.
We're, we're having a clean.
You're saying it's a parade, though.
Back to back, right?
Let's do it. That's it.
Okay.
It starts at West, this would go like this. If they time it right.
It'll be a bigger parade.
Yeah.
And they'll have no participants, too.
And, uh, that's right. And, and company, they would be upset that she's not playing.
So.
You can go on then. Yeah.
Okay.
So we go?
That's all I have for tonight.
No, we did.
No.
No, we did, I'm sorry, we did.
And Billy had to legitimize second class, because we had a parade.
Can I just get a classification? Are we putting that resolution forward tonight on the three month? Because we didn't go the rest of the year, why don't we do that?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to.
You do a, you do a, a resolution to require applications ninety days prior to the potential daily event.
Yep.
For fires.
Or special events, or any event, or amplified music, or liquor, liquor waivers.
And, and admission.
Right.
And a charge of admission.
That includes block parties.
And a charge of admission.
Oh, just admission.
You know, if, if you wanna make it an end to work, because all the block parties require waivers and.
Yeah, the noise, and they always, they don't, you know, it was three months. Yeah, those are neighborhood things. It doesn't enable it in the.
Why don't we make it specific to Fireman's Field?
No.
No.
Village property.
It's a, it's a problem, you know.
Or any special events being held at village property.
If we control that, should we, should we advise people who annually have these events that's new, uh?
This has happened very often, I mean, this, I think this is really the only really occasion that it does.
See, if it was something like that, you would've gotten two, four, five months ago.
Yeah.
If we're getting, well, if on the high school parade, yeah, what would you be sick?
Yeah.
Right. That's all I have.
Well, you wanna make that resolution?
We got it, we got it.
Okay.
On favor?
Aye.
Go, say it.
Parks and Eagles in Blooms.
Do you holler again?
No, I didn't holler, I, I, people say, oh, my voice raised, I don't know why. Have you looked into that fence thing next door, in the alleyway next to us? Why the park is, the.
I asked Peter about it, I'll.
Because I'm, I have a boil spout there, and I don't know how you get a fire truck in there.
Yep.
Or anything. Uh, and so right away, well, everybody, not just him.
Yep.
Okay, and otherwise, and we were very busy Saturday, anyway.
Good. Okay, but the recitals need something to.
No, the recitals are great, but I just said, the guys should've been there on Saturday, did great on Sunday, but Saturday, they, they did, they came late, they were there, they left, they came back, they were late. And I don't care, because, uh, the people come shopping.
Yeah.
And we got people from just, the, the people are complaining, the people are shopping for us personally, from Nashville County and Queens and Western Suffolk, we get a lot of people from there, so we're.
Happy you do.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go then.